We ready?
All right, noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so online at Acton TV's YouTube channel. They're also welcome to come join us in the audience. As a note, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the Acton TV's website at actontv.org. All right, we are going to motor through this evening. First item on our agenda, under my welcome, is to welcome the public to participate. So as per our policy, B E D H, members of the public are invited to speak for up to three minutes. Public participation only takes place during this time, and speakers must be recognized by the chair before speaking. And as a reminder, the committee does not typically respond during public participation. Good evening, Dr. Peterson.
Good evening. John Peterson, 6 Jackson Drive. I note on your agenda that tonight you'll be looking at your harassment policy, which unfortunately does not extend as a protected class to former school committee members. However, I did take a moment to test the readability of that policy, you know, per the note that I sent to some of you. And that policy reads in part, "It should be noted that while a policy sets forth the goal of promoting a work and educational environment that are free of harassment, the policy is not designed or intended to limit the authority of school officials to discipline or take remedial action for conduct which is deemed unacceptable regardless of whether that conduct satisfies the definition of unlawful harassment." That paragraph, one sentence, plus the other paragraph come in at grade 23. So, I'm not sure who your target audience is, but I'm thinking grade 23 is a little bit bridged too far. This is a second read. I expect you to approve it. I expect you to judge future policies in terms of their readability. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Hello, my name is Karen Root Watkins, 126 Strawberry Hill Road. I'm here representing Mothers Out Front Acton. And we would like to thank you first of all for having the sustainability policy on the agenda tonight and for all the work that you've been doing. We hear electric school buses are in the works, some very exciting things happening. Just to mention, Mothers Out Front started in Massachusetts. It's a national organization committed to addressing climate change and creating a livable future for our children. We want to thank the efforts of the Resource Force and everything that students in the district are doing and everything that staff and leadership are doing. We would like to address a little bit of the language in the sustainability policy. There are three key concerns from Mothers Out Front. One is how do we measure change? And in your policy, you are asking for an annual report, which we think is awesome. We'd like to suggest that the language go beyond reporting efforts and also include reporting results, which is the tricky part to measure, but the really important part to help us move forward. Also, and these are under the first bullet about energy conservation and decarbonization, and we will be emailing you some of the actual text suggestions we have. We'd also love for you to include language about electrification, where you talk about energy efficiency and conservation, because electrification is how we're really going to get to a clean energy future. Our grid is getting more renewable, and hopefully it'll get a lot more renewable. And this is the key. We have some great examples. The Boardwalk School is a great example of how we can incorporate electrification into a new building. We also have a great example from Connecticut. The Buckley Elementary School in Manchester, Connecticut, is a renovation project. And that's kind of what all of you will face in the future, is how do we renovate existing buildings and get that heating and cooling off of fossil fuels? So we'd like to include that language and also mention that we don't have to wait till 2050. We can try to get this done beforehand. On electric school buses, we really celebrate what's happened this year, and we hope that the school board will continue to look for creative ways to incorporate more electric school buses. We understand that under the leasing policy, the leased buses are not part of the climate leadership program, but we like how there's a workaround happening here. And finally, we'd like to say that Mothers Out Front supports the expansion of solar and the expansion of battery storage. So thank you very much for considering our suggestions, and thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you. All right, Resource Force, bring it on.
Hi, I'm Yang, and I'm in 10th grade.
Hi, I'm Rohan, and I'm in 10th grade.
Hi, I'm Tajiu, and I'm in 10th grade.
We are Resource Force, the student-led environmental team at the high school. We would like to acknowledge the school committee's work in pursuing the state climate leaders program and thank the policy committee for communicating with us their goals for climate action.
We would also like to bring attention to the recognition the town of Acton has received lately. The Boardwalk campus has won the Green Building Showcase in, sorry, the Green Building Showcase Award in Massachusetts and is described as an all-electric, net-zero MSBA school. Also, as many of you likely know, about a month ago, MassSafe distinguished our school district as a climate leader. The achievements Acton has made this year reflect the district's hard work and commitment to sustainability and set a powerful example of leadership towards building a greener future.
With the district already being recognized as a climate leader, it's important that we keep this momentum moving forward to decarbonize our schools. So we here at Resource Force, all of us here, believe that we should, you should consider these revisions to the sustainability policy and try to incorporate them so that we can move toward a better future and decarbonize and continue our goals.
Thank you guys very much. Any other members of the public wish to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. We are going to move past the superintendent's update since we got one just last week, and we're going to move on to our shendig for the night, which is the enrollment report first. Andrew.
All right, good evening, everyone. Whoops. I'll wait for you.
Yeah.
So, presenting for you the annual student enrollment report for the current school year. Obviously, it's useful and important for everyone to get a sense of our student population for a variety of reasons, certainly for us to best understand who we are educating, who we are supporting in our schools, and then obviously the implications that have to do with staffing, curricular choices, areas of emphasis, and then certainly when budget time comes around, sort of how we shape our budget to meet what we believe are the needs of the students in our schools. Just a couple of things for you to keep in mind as we go through a whole host of data and graphs. Some trends is basically that the trends that we've been seeing over the past couple of years continue in that direction. For example, we experienced a modest decline in overall student enrollment between last year and this year. And while we are experiencing an overall decline in enrollment, our increase in English-language students continues to progress and expand. An increase in economically disadvantaged students. There is a continued shift in the increased enrollment share by Boxborough. This current year, there was a slight dip, but the overall trend continues to increase for the Boxborough share. The differences in racial and ethnic demographics amongst the elementary schools continues to trend in the way that it has been in terms of some schools having a greater proportionality of racial and ethnic minorities, minorities nationally, but within our school district, certain schools have different demographic makeups. Minuteman Tech, a slight change where their enrollment is down from last year's high of 93 students. And then the other piece, just to share, is that our recent NESDEC projections have been fairly accurate. So as we look to future enrollments, in recent years, they have been helpful for us, both in terms of the moving target of kindergarten enrollment. The past two years have been fairly accurate. And then overall enrollment at the different grade levels and in general. So this is the first slide that gives you sort of that 40,000-foot view, enrollment by elementary, junior high, high school. And you can see there that we have a total of slightly under 5,000 students, where last year we were just around 5,000 students. In the elementary school, you have a range, so the lowest being 380 students at Gates, and the largest being Blanchard at 469 students. You have 114 Acton residents who are enrolled in the Blanchard School, and then you have 77 Boxborough residents who are attending one of five Acton elementary schools. Enrollment by race, we continue to be, I think, starting two years ago, we were a school district where there was no single race that had a majority, whereas the white population dipped under 50% starting a few years ago. This has stayed relatively static with some slight shifts. And then, as I sort of previewed in our first slide, here's the elementary school enrollment by race, where there is quite a bit of differences school to school. So just, I would point out that Conant and Gates, while the Asian-American population overall is around the low 30s, their population for the Asian and Asian-American population is in the 50s. In terms of students whom we serve who qualify as being economically disadvantaged, that is a population that continues to rise, both in terms of sheer number as well as percentage. So if you look on the chart farthest to the right, we have about 15, a little bit under 16% of our student population is considered economically disadvantaged. And then the sheer number itself has gone from 678 last year to 781 this year. And then you can see the distribution by school. And then, of course, a running narrative and theme that we all are well aware of and continue to be mindful of is the population of our English-language student population. Again, overall, our population is around 8%. That number 408, just like every year, I give you the number, that's the October 1 number, and we're now in mid-November, and I think we're at like 440-ish. So even in those six, seven weeks, the numbers expand. Here's some information about Minuteman enrollment, and as I pointed out, there was a peak last year at 94 students, and then it has come down to 83 students this year. And then there is the Acton and Boxborough split. So again, 16% in 21, 22. We're projecting to get to about 18.7 in a few years. There's a slight dip from last year, but overall, the trending is an increased share by Boxborough. And then, again, just overall enrollment over the past five years, a total enrollment change of about 200 students. And then there's the year-to-year differences. So 59 students between this year and last year, 37 students between last year and the year before, 53, 54, so on and so forth. Kindergarten, which is always that hard projection, but as I pointed out, they did a nice job. They were only off by about six students in terms of the projection. And then overall, only off by about 23 students, which, given that we have around 5,000 students, that's not, that's not too bad. Starting last year, as you recall, an emergency shelter was placed in Acton on 71 Haasmer Street, and students who, school-aged children who are placed there have the option of attending our schools, or if they were in a previous public school in Massachusetts or in the other areas around us, they have the option of remaining in those schools and to be transported there. So there may be more students in the shelters than are actually enrolling in our schools, but as of October 1st, we have 17 students who are residents of the emergency shelter who are placed in one of our schools, primarily elementary school. I don't believe we have any junior high students right now, and then a handful of high school-age students. Students with disabilities, we have students in out-of-district placements, the percentage of students enrolled in our schools who are on an IEP, and then students with 504 accommodations. And then this last one's a new one that Peter had pointed out that we have access to, which is students who report, who are residents in Acton or Boxborough, who are registered as homeschooled students, who are non-public enrollment, so i.e. private schools, or are choiced into other school settings. And here are future enrollment projections as of October's NESDEC report. So again, the trend is in general to decline over the next seven, eight years. Nothing in any given year super dramatic, but again, the trend, you know, between 30 students to 70 students, changing year to year, where in 2032, the projection is to go to around 4,700 students. Shifting a little bit to the junior high and high school, where obviously class sizes and teaming and things like that are a little bit more complex. RJ Gray this year, they have a memo at the end of my memo that offers you a little bit of an overview of the junior high setup. They continue to have eight teams, and those are the average team sizes. If you recall, last year, even though they do have eight teams, they did have to make some staffing reductions where sort of having a pure team of five independent teachers on each team did have to change because they reduced an English teacher. And so you have one, you have one teacher who is teaching both English, teaching an English class or a couple of sections of English and a couple of sections of social studies. And so then you have kids who are distributed across teams just as a result of that. And so that's what all those bullet points mean. And then here is just the class size distribution for the different classes at the junior high school that are on teams. So the 7th grade English sections, the 8th grade English sections, so on and so forth. And then on your far right, you'll have the overall average class sizes for those respective classes, courses. And then you have what they call exploratories, what they call specials in elementary. We call exploratories at the junior high school, art, engineering design, digital lit, drama, PE. This is a sampling. These aren't all the courses, but this is just a sampling of the different exploratories and the range of class sizes ranging from 20 to 26. PE health, they reduced one PE health teacher after last year due to the budget situation. So they went from five to four. So then obviously, the class sizes increased as a result of that. And then here's the high school, which of course is the largest and has the most moving parts from a course distribution standpoint. This chart on the top of there shows year over year, based on the five kind of primary core academic subject areas, the number of sections, the number of students who are enrolled in a course within those departments, and the average class sizes, and then the change over time. And then they offer a little bit more distinction in terms of class size highs, lows, medians, the number of sections that they have at different, different class sizes, which this next chart probably offers the most information for you. English, math, science, social studies, world language, this current year as of October 1st. So we use October 1st as sort of the point in time, given that there's always shifts. So all of this data, on October 1st, what does it look like? What's the snapshot? This shows the distribution of classes, class sections in each of those subject areas, and what are the class sizes distributions. So, for example, in English, you have 40 sections of English that have between 22 and 24 students. In social studies, you have 30 sections of social studies that have between 14 and 18 students. In science, you do have one class that has between 31 and 33 students, and then you'll have the average class size at the end there. So that's just how you read that particular chart. And I think that that's sort of a quick overview. I wanted to make sure I left some time. Hopefully you kind of peruse the memos, and if there's areas that you wanted to highlight, ask questions. I can obviously answer the, the first part is more knowledgeably, the junior high and high school ones, I may be able to answer, but I think there's also the possibility I may need to be your representative in asking follow-up questions to the respective principals. So I'm happy to do that now.
Thanks, Andrew. All right, looking around the table, questions. Hila.
Thanks, Andrew. Hopefully, a quick question. You had said the multilingual students kind of has jumped since the initial projections from like 408 to like 440-ish. Are there's new students coming in, or are these additional students being identified to receive services?
I definitely know that there are, there have been several new student registrations that have come in K through 12. So I would feel comfortable predicting that probably a significant majority of them are newly registered students. As for whether they are enrolled students who have recently qualified, let me find that out.
Ginny.
With regard to the class sizes at the high school, is that a big increase in class sizes due to the budget reductions that occurred this year?
So if you look at this chart, you can see year over year. So if you look at, the far left is this current year, and then the one to the immediate right of it is last year. If you look at English, their average went from 20.36 to 22. Social studies went from 20.69, and then actually is lower this year, 20.31. Math is lower this year than last year. Science is slightly higher by about .8 students, and then world language is slightly higher by about .3.
Yeah, I see the averages, but I was just, I've never been aware that we have had class sizes of the size, I think it was in the next slide, you know, 25 to 27, 65 sections of 25 to 27 kids. That's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I think the part that I probably wouldn't be able to answer as knowledgeably or as thoughtfully is how those class distributions happen, because on the one hand, you're right. I think having class sizes of 25 to 27, you have 65 sections. I think someone who might want to offer a sort of counterpoint is you also have 111 classes that are under 18 kids.
I want to offer that counterpoint.
Okay. So Adam's going to offer that counterpoint. So I, you know, so to your point, the average is the average, but is the average because they're all one number, or is it because they're at extremes? So that's, that's a good question to ask.
So I was wondering about the reference in the junior highs memo about the changes that happened with the compass program.
Yeah.
So previously, there had been an ability to have one of those primary core instructors able to do some small group work or to support students who couldn't push into the big classroom.
Correct.
And it looks like that's disappeared. I'm just wondering what the impact of that is?
Yeah, I think, I asked Jim about it, and basically what's happened is they reverted back to sort of the previous model, which I have a little bit of familiarity with because it was the model when I was at the junior high school, where students in the social emotional program, you know, ideally, they're, on a day, as you pointed out, we're in a setting where you can push in and get your support in, in the general English class. If and when those days don't happen, then they typically are in a different setting. They're in the compass program. And what would happen is either the adjustment counselor and/or the special educator would work with the subject area teacher to find out what the work is for that day, and sort of try their best to kind of model and mimic sort of the activity or the content that's being produced at that time. I think Jim wouldn't mind me saying that. I think the model that they had last year was something that they thought was more ideal, which I'd probably agree with. And as a result of some of the changes, they can't do that, so they've reverted back to that model.
Yeah, I think it's really important to capture these changes and the impact on learning, because not having students learning from a subject matter expert, I mean, our special educators are awesome.
Yeah, are great, right.
But they can't be experts in everything.
Right, right.
That's impactful, and we should pay attention to that.
Yeah.
Hi. I was interested in the part in the memo about teacher caseloads. Do we have sort of a system in place for both students and teachers to sort of give feedback on how they're feeling about, you know, whether or not they have the time, teachers feel they have the time to meet with all these students? I mean, some of them are upwards of 100 students that they're supposed to be taken care of and be available for, as well as students sort of being able to say, hey, I really needed to meet with my teacher after class today, but I wasn't able to because they didn't have time. I think that would all be really good data to sort of collect.
Okay. So you're referring to the high school memo that had the piece about teacher caseloads?
Yeah.
Got it.
Because I know, you know, an elementary teacher, yeah, class size obviously matters a huge amount. With high school, I think it's easy for people to think, oh, 25, you know, students in a classroom, that's not that, that bad. And then you see the caseload for the year, could be like 98 students that they're supposed to be available for, you know, even outside of class.
Other questions? You've got another one? All right, I'll give you one more, and then I have a few as well.
Thanks, Adam. I was curious also about the commentary about the master schedule with the junior high, and the comment was just that it's now tight because of, there's not a lot of flexibility for things like school assemblies, et cetera, et cetera, because it's no longer clean to be able to just, the agenda doesn't work anymore. What I was curious about that wasn't in the memo was the so what. So this is the fact of what's happening, but again, just curious about impact.
Yeah, let me ask Jim to sort of offer a bit, sort of more boots-on-the-ground kind of feedback on that. What I can tell you just, that I would imagine and that I would predict, just again, with my role in the junior high school, is when you have to distribute students on a team to other teachers on another team, one of the great things about teaming is that you, every other day, have the team teachers get together in a meeting and talk about your kids. And so in that setting, you're always missing, some cohort of kids is missing a cohort of teachers who aren't in that room talking about them. So that's one example. I think a slightly smaller one, but still a thing that I heard is, you know, when you're planning field trips, now it's a little bit more clunky and wonky because you're not this whole cohort that's planning a field trip. So the teacher themselves have to decide, am I going to plan this where I'm only going to take half my kids because the other half of my students are on other teams, things like that. But I will ask Jim for sort of a more substantive answer.
And if maybe I can clarify a little bit more, I guess my other question was, what is better shortened classes to be able to do that or missed classes?
Any last questions?
Go for it.
I didn't think of this till Rebecca asked her question, but on top of kind of topic-specific caseloads, could we also maybe think about like counseling caseloads as we think about staffing and making sure students have adequate resources?
Yep. I will find that out. Just to spitball.
Thank you.
I think we have at the high school, 8.4 counseling FTE, not including adjustment counselors, and roughly, what are we at, 1,500 and change, 1,600 students? So my guess is probably roughly a 200 to 1 ratio, roughly. But I will find out.
So Andrew, my first question is around students with disability demographics, where we've got students in out-of-district placements. That number has been decreasing?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm curious, is that number decreasing because the population of students who require out-of-district placements have left the district, or because we've opened more programs in the district to support them or expanded programs? I think that would be really interesting to see, particularly as we see the out-of-district placement going down, but our percentage of IEPs slightly rising.
Right. Let me find out.
All right. Now, the next one is going to be a series of questions and comments, just to sort of lead us down this journey. A lot of this comes from the fact that I read this memo right after I read the slides from the elementary budget task force and sort of got primed by some of the things that that group had been looking at. First thing I noticed, right, is that our enrollment trend has no longer hit a plateau and is due to go up. Our enrollment projections are to continue to go down. And I think what we've heard loud and clear from the community is, you have less students, why is it still so expensive? I don't think this is the place to describe that, but I think we need to continue to look at that. But I worry about this enrollment trend if for no other reason than there's no way that we're going to get out of hold harmless, which means that there is no more money coming from the state to help support us, which makes me worried because we just tapped the community, we got an override, we got more money from them, there's no other place to get money from. So that's, that was sort of the mindset that I was in as I started to look at some of this information. So the counterpoint to Ginny's, oh my gosh, there are so many sections that are high numbers. To me, there are 139 sections that have under 20 students in them. thirty-nine sections that have under twenty students in them. And when I look at social studies as an example, there are thirty sections with nineteen or less students in it. And I just put my, you know, I've been on this committee long enough, we've talked about class sizes, we've talked about especially at the elementary school, when I had kids at the elementary school. And I just sort of wondered, if we're talking about eighteen to twenty kids in a kindergarten class, because that's the best sort of matching that we can get and get attention for them, we would expect that class sizes should get larger as the kids progress, become a little bit more independent, have some, you know, some better facilities to take on education. So when I look at all of those class sizes that are at twenty-one or less, I just don't see that, I don't see, to coin Nate's term, a return on our academic investment in having such small classes at that size, particularly when we see enrollment going down and we have budget constraints. So my concern, I, I totally get twenty-five and up in a class, I would be concerned about that. I'm concerned about the smaller classes because that's where the budget number is going to come from. That's where the community is going to look at it as well. And then I, Lila, you brought up a great point too, around what's, what's the appropriate caseload for a high school teacher? And when you start to look at all the graphs and all the data together, the department that has the highest caseload, granted, it's one department has, has a hundred, an average of a hun- hundred students, is the department that has here the smallest number of sections and has, there was something else. It, it, world language, their average teacher course load is the only one that is over a hundred students. But they have the most sections that are at an average size. So the question for me isn't, and, and I get it, we want to understand from the teachers how they're feeling, we understand from the students, but I also want to understand from an outside resource, what is an appropriate caseload for a high school teacher? What is an appropriate caseload for a high school teacher given, given all of the other things that are being asked of them? There is a wonderful comment in here in Joni's memo about the fact that the teachers are asking for smaller caseloads because they're trying to work with de-leveling and provide specialized assistance to students. However, all of the data that the high school has given us omits all of the classes that are specialized programs with small numbers of students. So we're getting feedback that we're not actually seeing the data on. We're actually seeing no specialized programs in any of these average class sizes. We're seeing general education classes with general education students. If we were to add in the special education programs, we would shift even to smaller class sizes. So the perspective I want everyone to sort of understand as we go through this, because this is going to come up when we vote our budget guidelines shortly, we're not getting any more money from the state, we're not getting any more money from the towns, we have potentially fairly small class sizes at the high school level. How are we going to manage this? And how are we going to get a vote at town meeting? And how are we going to make sure that our students are getting the services and the supports they need? Are we putting our money in the right place to get that? And like I said, this is all preface because there was a really great presentation put together from the budget task force that asked those same questions at the elementary level. I think we have to sort of take some of those learnings and look at it at the secondary level. Tori, my monologue's over.
So another nuance that came out of that as well, though, one of the responses back was, a student is not a student is not a student. Your caseload is different based on whether that student has any of these other special needs and the number of extra meetings that go into that as well. So, yeah, how do you capture that nuance?
Exactly. And I think, again, we do ourselves a disservice by reporting these numbers but omitting those students with special requirements. So is that included in the caseload for the teachers? It's unclear. I, you know, I, I would ask maybe, Andrew, that we get Joni to give us a little bit more detail. Maybe that's an apples-to-apples comparison. We need to see all of the information, not with the omitted special programs, but with all the specialized programs so that we can understand caseloads. And yes, as, as Amanda is very fond of saying, a, an IEP student is first a general education student. A student with special needs is still a general education student. They should be in those general education classes. Those general education teachers should be supporting them. Let's include all that information and make an informed, I don't want to say a decision, but we want to, we want to analyze that data holistically. Please.
So Adam, when are you hoping for that information? I mean, are you hoping for it like at the next meeting or during the budget process?
The second. I think, you know, I think what we've got here is a very great first go with some very useful information that will help inform us throughout the budget process. I know we're going to have difficult decisions to make during the budget process. I would like some of that information to be a little bit more accessible so that we can, we can make an informed decision at the budget. So if we have to increase class sizes or revisit, as it says in our budget guidelines, revisit or enforce our class sizes policy, then I would like to have that information at that point.
I do, I think mostly agree with what you're saying, but I think it's useless to sort of just look at it from that perspective because the people who know if it's working or not, who know if we're putting the money in the right place or not, are the teachers and the students. So we need that data. I don't think we can move forward with like knowing what a class size should be without getting the information from the people affected.
I, I, I kind of agree, but I, my gut tells me if you ask a teacher, would you rather have fifteen kids in a class or twenty-five kids in a class, you know what their answer is going to be? And so I, I want outside support. I want, I want that information, but I want it validated. I want to know what best practices. That's, that's some of the information that we're getting out of new solutions on the elementary side, is here's what you're doing, and there are choices that you've made, and there's feedback that comes from it, but here's, here's some either validation or, or another way, commendation or recommendation is how they presented it. I would, I think we need to look at that. It may not be something that we can do in full this year, but when I look at what we're at on a budget, this might be a difficult decision we have to make before we necessarily have the opportunity to collect all that information.
And I think that's fine, but then I would frame it as this is a difficult decision that we have to make, instead of saying this is what we think is best for everybody without asking the people who are directly affected and know what's best.
Fair. Yep. Other comments or questions on the enrollment report? Okay, thanks, Andrew.
I'm still here.
I know you are. Personnel update?
Yeah, the, in your packets, we have the monthly personnel report. If you recall, this year, we are on the second committee meeting of each month, just provide a standard personnel report. Not really a lot of changes. That's the theme. Typically, and we don't really report it, hopefully you'll forgive us for this, but the, the greatest movement on a day-to-day, weekly basis are, are early support staff, assistant positions, bus drivers, things like that. So there's always a little bit of movement of in and out of those. But in terms of our certified staff, there really haven't been any changes. Maybe a few to report next month, but nothing this past month.
Great. Any questions on staffing? All right, Andrew, don't go anywhere.
I, I won't.
Okay, great. Up next on our evening with Andrew is a first read of the proposed changes to policy ADG, the sustainability policy.
Yes, so I want to first thank the Resource Force and the others who were during public comment, gave us sort of teed us up. But if you haven't heard, we are looking at some proposed changes to our sustainability policy. This is, I think, the culmination of a conversation that started last year, in part initiated by Resource Force. I want to thank them for their continued advocacy to the point where they even join us on Friday mornings at seven thirty for our policy subcommittee meetings, which we have tomorrow morning at seven thirty. And having really productive conversations around, you know, how can the district demonstrate a commitment and a sincere sort of sense of, of involvement with sustainability efforts, both locally and beyond. So this is the, the product of that. And so what we have for you today are the proposed changes that are in red, and would welcome sort of conversation around it. What I would say, and what I want to thank the Resource Force for discussing with us in our last meeting, is I think a lot of the content, there, there wasn't really any disagreement around the value and the benefits that were articulated. More importantly, it's really around, you know, knowing that as an institution, we can't, we don't have a crystal ball in terms of the, the different levers and contours of our landscape, financial or otherwise, policy-wise, things like that. Who knows what the next four years are going to provide. So to make sort of anything that's a promise or a commitment that we can't necessarily have all of the control over was sort of the big question. So when we talked about the first line of the district is committed to decarbonizing, we really had a conversation of what does the word commitment mean? Because on the one hand, you don't want the word commitment to just sort of be an empty promise that just says, yeah, we're committed. And at the same time, you know, I think it would probably be a challenge for the committee to use the word committed in a way that sort of offers a hundred percent guarantee of a specific timeline and a specific outcome in a specific order, just because I don't think we're in a position to necessarily do that, given the contours that exist. So, so we talked about sort of the word, we, we all agree that the word committed really is an appropriate one with, with the, with the understanding that it's not an empty promise, nor is it, you know, etched in stone as for how things will go and in what particular order. But with that in mind, I think I would open up to all of you, unless Liz or Lila, if you have anything to share, policy subcommittee and, and for all of you to entertain conversation.
Thank you, Andrew. I did have one other thing that I wanted to just mention because, again, I want to thank, you know, public participation and the Resource Force has been so amazing. One thing that I will say that we kind of were thoughtful about, I know that there was a public comment sort of mentioning that they would like to see electrification mentioned specifically. And what we were really trying to do is not, you know, pigeonhole so that we are bound to one thing. You know, two years ago, if you had said, you know, chat GPT, no one would even know. And now that's kind of like an inevitable future. And we really didn't want to pigeonhole what our resources could be in the future.
Any questions or comments on this? Ben?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I really like seeing how we're aligning our goals as a district with the state's commitment to 2050 and decarbonization. I think it's great, especially looking forward to the next four years, that we are marching lockstep with the administration on the statewide level. So thank you.
And can someone clarify for me? But I think a lot of this, and maybe Kate, you could clarify, this, a lot of this is sort of based on, inspired the, the town of Acton's roadmap. Is that fair to say, correct? So there is some consistency and, and synergy there.
Other questions, comments? I have one that I'm looking at maybe Peter or Andrew about, which is reacting to a little bit of the comments that we got early on and looking in here where we're, we are requiring the district to do something, would it be helpful to codify some procedure that goes with this policy? Something around what are we reporting? How are we measuring things? What are some of those standards? And I think that may speak to some of the public's comments about, you've got something here, but you, you need to put a little bit more into it. And, and Liz's comment about, we're, we're outlining a policy of, of where the school committee believes, but there's the way that it goes and gets actioned. And so maybe there's the opportunity to put some of that in the hands of the district in, in the form of a procedure to define how that's going to happen.
Let us give that a little thought. I'd like to, you know, be able to maybe meet with Kate and the facilities team and think about what that might look like before we say yes or no, but at least we can come back and talk about what opportunities may exist.
Great. Yeah, I mean, my, my, my feeling is the policy is something that wants to stand for a long time, but the procedures give us and give you as the district some leeway to sort of define what happens inside there. I, I will echo my gratitude to the Resource Force and their advisor for sticking with this and working through our oftentimes slow and, and difficult policy process. But what I, you know, what I believe what we have here is something that will last the test of time, can only get better from here. So as a reminder, this is a first read, so any additional comments or questions can go to Liz and Andrew, preferably before their seven thirty meeting tomorrow. Do you have a meeting?
We have a meeting, another meeting in two. My sense is we'll have a meeting before we.
Before we bring this back to a second read. Excellent. So if you have other questions or comments, please send them to the policy subcommittee. All right. There's another new policy. Is there? No.
No.
We're on to now our ongoing business. Don't go anywhere.
I won't.
You're still here, Andrew. We've got some more policy updates, second reads on a number of policies.
Yes, so if you recall, a few weeks ago, we did a first read on three policies that were all affected by the change in Title IX guidelines from the federal government. It was our harassment policy, pregnant and parenting students, and non-discrimination policy. And so, so there were contents both about procedure, procedural elements from illegal, legal statutes that had to be embedded into those policies that also, also changed some definitions. For example, sexual harassment is now sex-based harassment. It also changes the definition of who qualifies under pregnant and parenting students. And so those changes were made. We shared that as a first read. We didn't get any feedback about questions or concerns, so we bring this back to you for a second read and potentially asking for your vote to approve the proposed changes to those three policies.
Any additional feedback, questions, comments? Thank you all. Have a good evening. We'll see you in two to three weeks. Is there a motion to approve the proposed changes to policies AC? AC, did you have a question? Do you have a comment? You can have, make a comment as long as you make a motion as well.
My comment was in response to John's comments in the beginning about the language. And I know that we got the language for this policy from the lawyers who updated the language based off of the regs. Just thinking out loud here, I wonder if it's helpful as a policy subcommittee to also have some sort of version of like plain language, knowing that it won't, I don't know, just some way for it to be a little bit more legible because I understand that legal jargon is not super helpful. I will make a motion to approve policy AC.
So moved. How about ACAB and JIE at the same time?
Uh, I'll, yeah, I'll take your friendly amendment.
Seconded. All right, so Lila made the motion to approve proposed changes to policies AC, ACAB, and JIE. Ben seconded that. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
It's, you know, anytime.
Thanks for being at the table with us tonight. All right. We are now moving on to a, I think, quick FY25 budget update. I know we got a quick update on health insurance trust last time we met. Anything new, Sheri, to share with us on that?
The only thing that we have is we got the most recent Harvard Pilgrim bills in, and after we paid them, we still have eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in our contingency accounts. We're going to be fine.
Wonderful. That's great news. Thank you. All right, we're now on to the FY26 budget topic and our draft budget guidelines, which have magically appeared on the screen behind me. Peter, do you want to run through any of this with us one more time?
So I don't need to, to go over the, the whole set of guidelines because these are largely unchanged. However, there is one change that we did make through budget subcommittee. And it was, you can see it in blue, but it is the addition of a request from the town of Boxborough that the Boxborough assessment remains less than six percent. We talked about that in budget sub. We shared from a staff perspective that the six percent cap is not going to be the limiting factor on the budget. There are other limiting factors on the budget, which will continue to be the availability of the overall increase in the town of Acton for the bottom line of the Acton budget. So I just want to be clear about that. It's not any one town at this point that's the budgeting limiting factor. It's just the overall availability of resources. And we are in a position where resources, you know, the revenues continue to not keep up with expenses. It is simply put, you know, the pressure of inflation and the cost of doing business. There's no, you know, big surprises or curveballs that we're seeing in the budget, other than it's going to be a really challenging budget year again. What I did want to do, though, before you vote on the guidelines, I want to walk through really transparently what a three percent increase in the revenue looks like, because the numbers have shifted around over the course of the last, you know, six months or so since town meeting. And I want to make sure we all have a solid understanding and the community has a clear understanding of what three percent looks like. Because it will probably look a little surprising, but I want you to understand the numbers behind it. So at town meeting last year, the approved operating budget for the district was a hundred and fourteen million, three hundred and eighty thousand, one oh five. That, that was our budget approved at town meeting. And I think if I set this up good, I did set it up correctly. After the budget, we had to come back to you in the summer and share with you that the health insurance trust again didn't have enough money to. pay runout claims, and we were going to need more money for contingency account. You voted additional use of E and D plus the elementary budget study to the tune of just under 1.7 million. Additionally, at the same time, we had a very, very small amount of band premium. That is the short-term borrowing from the Boardwalk Campus Building, so that also went into the budget at that time. The revised budget for the school year then became $116,091,265. That is the revised budget that you voted prior to the school year. I just want to be clear about how those numbers flowed. When we did that, we made the commitment that that would not become the starting budget for an FY26 budget increase. We recognize those were one-time funds. We weren't trying to do fuzzy numbers with either of the towns. We want to be clear about that. So, there's two adjustments that need to happen before we start to calculate an increase. The first is that we, coming in the, this year, we will retire the debt from the junior and senior high school. That is excluded debt. What that means is, and I think it was 20 or 30 years ago, whatever it was, when we did those renovations, the taxpayers voted to temporarily raise their taxes in order to pay that debt. What that means on the temporary part is as soon as the debt's paid off, the tax base comes down by the exact amount of the debt. So, if we reduce the debt out of the budget, which is 1.6 million and change, the towns also lose the exact same amount of revenue. So, it's not like we can keep that 1.6 million in creating the next budget, because the revenue has disappeared, and that, you know, would not be sustainable for the communities. So, we take that money out. We then take out the amount of money that the school committee had voted, which is lines four and five, and that gives us what the base budget is when we calculate for FY26. So, we're actually doing an increase on 112,752,505. We're not losing any money in this, right? I want to be clear about that. This is not a loss to us. It looks like it on paper, but it's not, because it, it was all excluded debt, so the taxes went up temporarily, they come back down. It doesn't actually impact our bottom line, because we no longer have to pay debt. That's a good thing. The budget guidelines call for a 3% budget increase. All right. What that means is that based on the 112,750, we will have just under $3.4 million available for the FY26 budget increase. That means our budget target, the upper limit of that, is 116,135,080. All right, that is the 3% increase. In terms of what that does to assessments, the overall budget will look on paper like it's going up 1.53%. It's not. It's actually going up 3%, but because particularly the debt piece of it, that's what's driving the number down on the percentage increase. In terms of assessments, the Acton Assessment will go up 0.87%, and in Boxborough, it's 5.15%. We looked at what would happen if the, we pushed all the way up to 6% in Boxborough. It actually just increases the size of the deficit on the Acton ALG plan. With this, I think, you know, it, it's maybe 500,000 deficit now on the ALG plan, maybe even under that. That actually is very, very low for this time of year. That means we're very close to a balanced budget with this. If we tried to go all the way up to 6% on the Boxborough Assessment, that deficit on the ALG plan goes to 1.5 million. So, either way, there's not really budget room left in this. So, I just want to be clear about why, you know, we're getting to these numbers, targets. Answer any questions that you have now about revenue projections. I will say, this is going to be challenging. When you look at just cost drivers, our cost of contracts alone, just to roll up from this year to next, is $3.9 million, 3.8 million. Is that correct, Sherri? 3, 8? Health insurance is 2.1 million of an increase, and that's based on the Maya statewide average, because we're capped under Maya, but that's going to be challenging. And then we have, you know, or talked to you before about reduced amount of circuit breaker coming in from the state below what we projected, so we don't have that available to use. Some special education out of district tuitions in terms of placements that were done between when the budget ended last year and what we're projecting for next year. So, there are some significant shifts. It's going to leave about a $2.3 million deficit, is what we're projecting. We sent that out to staff earlier today, so that they weren't hearing things in public for the first time. It's not a comfortable thing to hear. It's certainly not what we want, but we are, you know, certainly, you know, and, and you are the people who know the community best, but based on the way the override went last year, I don't see additional resources becoming available, and this is going to be one of the years that I, I think we're going to have to figure out, how are we going to live within the means that we have. So, that's what our administration has been preparing for. You know, it will mean that we're going to have to make some choices where we might want to choose otherwise, but we have to think about what the balance of the needs of our students, staff, and community is, and what the resources that are available to us. And it means that we're going to have to balance some needs and, and think about how we do that in the most sensitive and thoughtful way possible. So, just want to, you know, preface that and say, it's going to be another challenging budget year. I want you to make sure you understand and can ask any questions you want about how we're projecting revenues and what this means, but also start to get these numbers out there for the towns that, so that they can plan. I know we have ALG next week. I know Boxborough has been really, you know, kind of, you know, pins and cushions, waiting for our budget numbers and projections to come in, so that they could plan what they needed to do as a community. So, hopefully this at least moves some of that discussion forward and provides kind of a roadmap to what we're going to need to do.
Thanks, Peter. Questions? Liz?
Just because I know that this is something that I hear a lot in the community, do you know what that target would be if we were to offer level services from last year?
118,400, which is probably somewhere in the 4%, 4.5% range, I would guess. Sherri?
118,818.
118,818.
Thank you. Just wanted, for transparency, I know we were talking about, you know, the deficit of a 2 million, but just being able to know the other, the flip side of that, that, you know, level services would be 118, when, again, we're not looking to necessarily be able to fund level services.
Other questions, comments? All right, so we have our budget guidelines. Like Peter said, relatively unchanged from the last time we saw them, only the addition of the input from Boxborough, that their assessment come in less than 6%. Is there a motion to approve the FY26 budget guidelines?
So moved.
Seconded.
That was Tori, seconded by Ben. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. We are on to Subcommittee and Member Reports. Let's start with Budget. Becca?
I will say there isn't that much to report, since I think Peter and Sherri did a good job of laying it out. But the Budget Sub did meet on Monday, the 18th, at 2:00 PM on Zoom. We discussed, you know, the current updates that you just heard about, expected revenues, discussed how, you know, things are looking in terms of state aid, but a lot is unknown until they finalize their budgets, and that takes a while, as we all know. We did also talk about some of the preliminary sort of recommendations that are starting to be formed by the task force, and also how we need to try and quantify some of the impact of different proposed changes. And, you know, some of these things are going to be really hard to quantify, like community feel, you know, how do staff feel working under, you know, certain changed conditions? How is school safety? You know, how do people perceive school safety? A lot of these things that just aren't going to come from a test or, you know, like a, a data number that we usually see here. And, you know, we're going to meet again on the 3rd at 2:00 PM on Zoom as well, and just continue the discussion.
Thank you. Any other Subcommittee's met since we presented last? Oh, we missed Capital last week. Would you like to present on the Capital Subcommittee, Ben?
Fortunately, I can't get to my notes, because I'm still locked down on my PC. I do have a Select Board meeting update, if that helps.
That would be wonderful.
Excellent. The Acton Select Board held its regular meeting, beginning with an executive session this past Monday to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 50 Independence Road under Purpose 6. During the public hearings, the Board voted unanimously to approve changes to the beneficial interest, corporate reorganization, and stock transfers of Roach Brothers Supermarket at 305 Main Street. Additionally, a use special permit for Country K-9 Retreat at 278 Great Road was approved. A site plan, special permit hearing for Chapter 35A, or strike that, for 35, 358A and 358B, Great Road was continued to December the 16th. New business, a bunch of presentations on tax relief programs, and the preliminary budget estimates were presented and approved wavering, waiving a $50,000 additional building permit fees for the McManus Manor Project, along with additional support for feasibility studies for the Water Resource Advisory Committee. Finally, several consent items were approved, including letters of support for the Northern Tier Rail Trail and the 495 Metro Partnership redo application.
Thank you. Hi, Sherri.
I can probably update you on Capital if you want, because I was there.
That would be wonderful.
We went over what we're currently doing, and we have put out the specs, and we've had a lot of companies, I think 15 companies, come through on the roof of this building. The bids are going to be due in mid-J, mid-December for, we had to do it two ways, just for the one piece that we have on this side, plus we put in all adults for the piece that's over here. When we talked about next year's capital, we are putting together a 10-year capital plan, and the Facilities Department is meeting with all the principals this week and the final principal next Monday. The Capital Subcommittee added another meeting on December 5th to discuss where we want to bring everything for next year, before they present to the school committee in December.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sherri, just for clarification, we're talking the flat parts of the roof only, correct? Not the V?
Yes, the flat parts only.
Okay. I see audience members looking up, so I just wanted to make sure we were clear.
Yes, just the flat parts.
Just the leaky parts. All right, any other liaison updates? I can share that the ABC PAC met last night. Vikram and I were both there. Again, they're talking about the update to the new IEP form, a little bit of an overview on the MCAS, change of MCAS graduation requirements and what that means for students with disabilities. There are a couple of members from the CPAC who are on the Elementary Budget Task Force. They gave an update on that. And the CPAC continues to reach out to specifically some of the PTOs at the elementary level, so that parents can learn more about the CPAC and what they do. I think that was it for all the Subcommittee Member Reports. So, we're going to move on to our second to last, third to last item, which is the School Resource Officer MOU for the Town of Boxborough. Peter?
All right, thank you, Adam. So, I had an opportunity to meet with the Boxborough Police Chief. Boxborough has, prior to this police chief, they actually did not have school resource officers or anyone trained as a school resource officer. They did, however, have juvenile officers, which, you know, were still present, and if some things needed in a school, they were the ones who responded, but they had not completed the school resource officer training. The Boxborough Police Chief actually proactively sent three of his officers to SRO training, because he wanted them to have the same training that Acton Police would typically have. They've completed that. So, the MOU that you see in front of you is identical to the Acton one, except anything shaded in green. The only substantive change was that Boxborough doesn't assign their school resource officers on a full-time basis, so there's no way to develop that really crystal-clear schedule of exactly when they're in schools. So, what we did as, what I'm hoping is a reasonable change, is we left that as, any visits will be pre-scheduled between the SRO and the principal, so that people know when the SRO would be in the building ahead of time. It's just not a predictable enough schedule of when they're available in order to, to have a set schedule for the whole year.
Any questions, comments, motions to approve?
I move to approve.
The MOU?
The MOU for Boxborough SRO?
As presented.
Second.
As presented. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Jenny made the motion. Liz seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One. Lila, was that in opposition?
Yes.
Two, and any abstentions? All right. Abstention from Lakshmi? And Ben? Yes, I saw, sorry, I saw Ben's. I just didn't say it out loud. So, we have one, two, three, four, five in favor, two opposed, two abstentions. They do make me do all the work in the math here. Peter? Eight and a half in favor. Two abstentions.
Five, five, yeah, yeah.
It passes. It passes. Really need to get that Google sheet created for taking votes on the fly. An abacus. We'll get a tool. Based on our, once again, shoddy math.
Fuzzy math.
Fuzzy math. I believe this has passed, so thank you. Next item is School Committee Goal Update, School Committee Engagement Update. I'll, I'll start. I have one sort of piece of information around community outreach, but not so much about us, but a piece of information everybody should know, is that we, in the Town of Boxborough, have been notified by the Mass DOT that they are going to begin the replacement of the bridge over 495 at 111. So, starting December, they will begin that replacement, and they expect to be done by the spring of 2027. There is an informational meeting on November 26 in Boxborough Town Hall in the Grange Hall to get more information, but just for your information, if you're making your way over to either the Boxborough Transfer Station, Craft Food Halls, or the lovely Town of Harvard, it may take you a little bit longer to get over there for the next two and a half years. Yeah. Any other updates?
Yeah. United Way, Acton, Boxborough United Way slash the Shelter. We're looking for folks to volunteer with the kiddos after school, also on the weekends. That's part one. Part two is that Acton has a special town meeting this coming Monday, the 25th. It starts at 6:00. You might want to show up early to check in. Check in starts at 5:15. You can also, if you need trouble with transporta, if you have trouble with transportation, you need some support, you can call Cross Town Connect by noon tomorrow, Friday, to schedule a ride. And it's at the High School Auditorium.
Thank you. Any other updates? I have a question slash comment on engagement. So, we had a tough time almost making, not making quorum at our last meeting, and I did send a message out to everybody that we needed to make sure we could do that tonight. I want to recognize the fact that the reason that we didn't, or almost didn't make quorum last week was for a lot of last-minute items and things that are totally understandable. And I think the piece that's missing is that there are some people who in advance have already said, I've got a commitment, I knew about this, and we knew they're going to be out. On the administrator's side, we track that, but there isn't necessarily a way for everyone else to see that. So, I would love for you to think about how maybe we have a more open or shared way of tracking attendance, particularly if you know well in advance that you're not going to be here. I don't have a great solution for it right now, so I'm, I'm looking for any ideas. You don't have to give them to me now, but my, my takeaway, because I did get a couple of replies from people in my email that said, but this is the first time I was out, or I told you well in advance, and all of those are totally valid. I had a work emergency, totally valid. The problem is, nobody else has the view of how many other people have had those issues. So, think about maybe how we can track that as a group, so that some people So think about maybe how we can track that as a group, so that some people know well in advance, some people maybe aren't feeling well, but could sit with a mask in the far corner of the room to help us make quorum. Some of us have a, you know, are getting pressured by their employer to come work, but maybe there's some opportunity to say to them, I am the quorum at my own meeting. So think about that. Maybe there's a way that we can improve this a little bit, so that we don't get caught out in the future with potentially not making quorum.
I don't want to reopen the idea of hybrid meetings, but I've seen other bodies, if somebody is traveling, like a member of another board that I have to report to, that person was making quorum in the airport.
It's something that we could consider. I would say it's something we should talk about at a workshop, maybe in the future. It's not necessarily something I want to sit in debate in a, in a business meeting. But it's definitely something that we can consider. I think it would be good to get the input from the folks who need to sort of manage the backend of that, to see how, not feasible, but how manageable it would be. Lakshmi?
Is diligent a possibility to maintain who is able to and not able to for us to get a view of?
It's a good question. I don't know. Peter, maybe we can look and see if there's some sort of attendance, or is there?
Not ahead of time, no, just, just during meeting attendance.
Is there no way to create a place where we can check off saying, I will be there or not, not there?
Yeah, what we could potentially have is like a Google form that people can go into and just say yes or no. That is not a violation of open meeting law. It's just a scheduling function.
Yep.
I was merely going to ask about open meeting, how this played with the open meeting law, and whether we would need to have some kind of policy around personal information that's being shared. But if it's a scheduling function that can remain confidential, it opens up a different door.
Yeah, I would check it with our attorney just to make sure, but I'm relatively certain attendance at meetings is just a calendaring function, which is not part of open meeting law. It's still public records, but it's not open meeting law.
Yeah, I just want to, all the same thoughts, and I think we should take some time to think about it, because the other thing that I am cognizant of is any time we create then a document where we're tracking everybody's attendance, that is a public document. So I don't know if there's a good way around it, but we all kind of need to know when someone else isn't going to show up, just so that we can check on that. It's no fun for me and Julie to have to send emails out at the last minute on a Thursday and be like, hey, can we get everyone to confirm so that we have quorum? But at the same point, we know that there are people who like to track our attendance and give us grades on that, so we don't necessarily want to make that super easy for them. All right, clear consensus on the committee on that. Any other Committee Communication Engagement Updates? So let's move on to the Consent Agenda. So items on our Consent Agenda don't usually require discussion. Approved with one vote unless any member would like to have an item held. If you would, you say hold, as I read the next list of items. The approval of the new Junior High Student Activity Club Animation and Film Club, approval of the Littleton Electric Light and Water Department $4,998.35 donation to Blanchard Memorial Elementary, and the approval of warrants as presented in the packet on November 21st, 2024. Hearing no holds. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Seconded. That was Tori, followed by Lila. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Before we adjourn, a reminder that our next meeting, and I don't have the date off the top of my head, I want to say December 5th. As a reminder, that meeting is going to call to order at 6:30 for an executive session, and then we'll plan on returning to open session at around 7:15. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Seconded.
That was Ben, then Tori. All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you all. Have a lovely evening.